Well, the hour is 7:32. Before we call the meeting to order, it is my job to review with you the rules for a remote meeting. So if you will give me your attention, please, and bear with me while I go through this for the benefit of our guests that are watching online and anybody else that will be watching this on YouTube later. All right. This meeting is open to the public through advance notice on the Borough website with the link that was provided. The agenda for the meeting was posted on the website in advance of the meeting for the public to download. The official record of the meeting will be the written minutes that must be submitted to council for approval. The recording of the meeting will not be the official record of the meeting. During the meeting, the council and staff will be the only live microphones. The public microphones will be unmuted to make comments during the public comment sections of the meeting on an individual basis. This will be so that the comments can be clearly heard by all. The public can use the raise your hand feature of the software, and their microphone will then be unmuted for them to comment. Members of the public must state their name and address before proceeding with their comment. If a computer, excuse me, if a commenter would like to have their comment in the minutes unabridged, it must be submitted to the Borough office in writing. While every attempt will be made to limit executive session of council, the need may arise that adjournment to an executive session will be necessary. At that time, the host will remove the public and any staff not involved from the meeting, and stop the recording, and lock the meeting to entry. If there is action to be taken after the executive session and the council president's direction, the host will unlock the meeting and begin recording again. A record of the public logins will be attached to the minutes as an attendance sheet. At the adjournment of the meeting, the video shall be compiled and added to the YouTube channel under Borough of Mechanicsburg. Those of you who wish to view it later may do so at your leisure. During this crisis, the guest portion of the agenda shall be suspended. And finally, comments received via non- or electronic means shall be read into the minutes under the correspondence portion of the agenda. Thank you for your indulgence, and I now call this May 5, 2020, Cinco de Mayo Meeting of Borough Council to order. All right, please, from your vantage point, let's have a pledge of allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Roll call.
President Weber.
Here.
Vice President Miller. Councilwoman Agarson.
Here.
Councilman Anthony.
Present.
Pellman, Whitcomb, Weber, Winchell, Mayor Ritter, Solicitor Coin, Solicitor Miller, Chief of Police Myers, Fire Chief Knaff, EMC Wardle, Mayor Ritter, Manager Sizer.
Here.
Did I miss anyone? Januar Gaski.
All right.
I will have a list of everyone. You do have a quorum, President Weber.
Thank you, thank you. Is Nate Wardle on?
I'm on, yes, I'm on the phone.
Okay, thank you, Nate. All right, at this time in the meeting for citizens' comments, I might add before we open up for comments that these are indeed comments. Especially due to the nature of this meeting, we will not enter into debate on any issue that may arise, but we will take your comments under advisement, and someone from council or the staff will get back to you, hopefully with a solution to the issue that you present. So at this time, if there are any citizens' comments, if you wish, hit the raise your hand button, and we'll try to unmute you so that you can speak. Are there any?
Yes, Ruth Woodside has. Ruth, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Roger. Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Ruth.
Hi. I'm Ruth Woodside. I live at the property at 125 East Portland Street, and I'm here to revisit the topic of the property at 123 East Portland Street. It's something that I addressed with Borough back in October of last year. There's not been much happening there. I do know that you folks had done some activity immediately after that meeting, and I know that there was a commitment to bring this to the Cumberland County Courthouse, and it was disappointing to see that nothing had happened with that. I also know that Greg Renninger passed away this year, early this year, so I'm just touching base to find out if there is anything going on with the property at 123 East Portland.
Roger, do you have anything to add to that from recent things?
Yeah, the only thing I could add to that is that, yes, Mr. Renninger had passed away. We were in contact with his estate. Most of the fines and everything that we issued were issued in Mr. Renninger's name. We're not going to have to start all over again, but in the fact of the matter is, we're going to start looking at that now that, to be honest with you, now that the growing season's here, we're going to reach out to her, the owner of the estate, and start proceedings from that. As you know, I don't know if you know that or not, Ruth, we've been down here for the last eight weeks, so we've got things that got put in the back burner, but now that spring is here, I just talked to Jeff tonight, we're going to start getting things rolling again with council's consent on some of this stuff to get people back to work and get them up, get the staff up and running.
Right, and I appreciate everything you guys have gone through the past eight weeks. I know it's been a struggle, and that's why I've held off on saying anything. I do know that the neighbors, Mike, at 119 mowed the little patch between the street and the sidewalk because it was so overgrown, but the backyard is just totally trashed again, and I can see there's some, if you look at the yards, and I walk the alley, there's some, you're seeing some spillage of this blight moving into other yards as well. The property on the other side of 123, there's bags of garbage laying beside his house. It's not going out back. He just mowed the lawn after two weeks of nothing, and if you walk the alley, you'll see abandoned televisions, just all kinds of trash accumulating out back, and it's sorry, it's sad to see that happen to this street. It's been a good street, and people are taking pride in what they, most people are taking pride in what they do, but they're, I mean, I can show you on our street, our just little block, three televisions that have been laying out there for months, and I hate seeing stuff like that go on, because if we don't address it, it's just going to continue to go on. So whatever you can do, Roger, I appreciate.
Thank you, Roger. Do you have Ruth's contact information, or phone number, et cetera?
Oh, yes, I do. Ruth and I stay in contact.
Well, we'll try to get back to you, you know, as quickly as we can and let you know what's inspiring there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Yep.
Is there anyone else, citizens' comments? I'm not seeing any, Roger, or you?
Kyle's the only one I see with his hand up, and I'm, he is, I put his hand down. I don't see any others, sir.
All right, hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the emergency meeting of March 21, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is that you, Mr. Pellman?
It is.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Regular meeting of council of April 21, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarson.
Second.
Second. I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Hearing none, we will accept the minutes as written. All right, we move to the manager's report, Mr. Sizer.
All right, I will try to make this briefer than the memo I sent out yesterday. There's a lot of stuff to go over. We've had a lot of meetings. I met with Upper Allen Township, Mechanicsburg Area School District to discuss the joint rec. I've also provided that group with the, a copy of the agreement that addresses our concerns with them. They're, we're trying to get this meeting set up for next Monday to discuss what it is that everybody sent in to Greg Longwell, and hopefully we can get something aired out here relatively shortly. This came out of the meeting that we had previously with Upper Allen Township, President Weber, Vice President Miller, and I think Sarah, and I think Councilman Agarson was there also. So it's, it's going to be, I think it's going to be a little bit of a process. I think we're looking at something a little different than what Upper Allen's looking at, but we'll, we'll be able to work something through. I feel pretty confident. Second thing I have is that I met with Silver Spring Township about a plan for opening the compost site. What we've come up with, and this is where I'm going to look for council's consent on this, is to open the site to residents only, beginning this Thursday, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we will have it manned. We're going to actually change the directions going in, directions going out. I've had rule signs printed up, expensive rule signs printed up, for them to hang on the fence and to go through with that. The other part of this is Silver Spring is going to provide some of the manpower also to keep an eye on things. Then we're going to meet on Monday to discuss about the commercial situation and see when we want to open it up for commercial, but right now, with pen waste, collecting yard waste, and the residents, the weather getting the way it is, we feel that it's, it's going to be time to do this. We think we can keep a good control over it. We're making arrangements. We've moved stuff around on the site to try to let people go in and out with the least amount of contact as possible. The other part of that is the, the commercial side. I think that's where we're going to see a giant influx here later on, so, but we've got things, I think, under control at the site. I think we can do that. This is going to mean bringing back my compost coordinator, probably to a full-time basis instead of him working half-time. If we can do that, I think that's going to be a good thing. The, I've been working with Nate and back and forth with a few things, and with Chief Myers. We're going to work to get a, in anticipation of opening back up and us switching over to the yellow, a plan and a process of what we're going to be doing as far as opening up, what services we're going to have open, so on and so forth. Nate can speak to the potential timeline of us looking at the yellow or green, I'm not even considering green at this point in time, but looking at the yellow here coming up, hopefully by the end of the month, but we'll see where it goes from what the governor comes out with, what the Department of Health is out with. So that's kind of where we're at right now with those three things. Those seem to be the three big things right now. Our plan, I'm going to finish up the outline I have for that and send it out to council for their approval, but I would like to start getting everyone back to full-time status. I still have one that I'm going to have to give them sick time off because they don't have childcare. It's in a shared custody situation, so that person's going to be working two days one week and three days the next. He does have enough sick time, so we're going to, we'll proceed with that, but at this point in time, I'm shooting for, hopefully, the 18th of getting everybody back to full-time. I can spread them out enough that we'll, we'll have, there won't be that much risk of exposure, and, but I've also, under the, the yellow plan, it says to have people work from home as much as possible. I think we're going to continue that with Jeff, Glenda, and Barb Arnold, working from home as much as they can. We'll keep a staff in the office here that can handle resident calls and stuff like that. I think we're going pretty good. Not to speak for the police department, but those guys seem to be doing pretty good upstairs. I think they're pretty much cooperating with everything that we're, we're trying to implement. I know we're getting supplies. I ordered masks for everyone to wear. The highways, sewer plant are going to get the fluorescent green mask. We're going to have Mechanicsburg Green in here, so, but that's about all I have right now. I know that we'll talk about a little bit more as we go down further on the, on the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. EMC Wardle.
Thank you very much.
Let me, let me back up a second. I skipped the mayor. My apologies.
No problem.
The mayor?
Mr. President, I give my report some of the second meeting of the month, so I do not have a report today, but I will have a report at the next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
That was my fault on the agenda, sir.
EMC Wardle.
Yes, President Weber. I wanted to first go through some of the things that I've been doing, and then I'll kind of give an update statistically as to where Cumberland County and the Mechanicsburg area is. I've been working with Roger, as you said, on a couple of things, reviewing the pool memo, which I think you all have, and I know is an agenda item, working to track expenses in the borough with, between the police department, fire department, and the Borough staff. Expenses right now are just under, by I think $4, $41,200. So we are certainly keeping track of those. We had a WebEx today with Pima to talk about how we will go through the reimbursement process. Both Roger and I were on that, so that whenever the time comes for us to start preparing to submit all of our invoices and all of our funding for reimbursement, that we can make sure that we do that. Also, have been worked either over the weekend or late last week to provide information to the county, which they then provided to the state in regards to some of the services that are taking place in the borough and close to the borough regarding helping people who may need food, shared some information about what New Hope Ministries is doing, what's being done by the churches in the borough, what's being done by the school district, so that the county and state are aware of the services that are being provided to people who are in need of food here in the Mechanicsburg area. I had a county meeting yesterday, talked through mainly just what's going on in the county in regards to coronavirus. They expect to provide information to each of the EMCs by the end of the week as to whether there are any cases in the EMC's jurisdiction. They said that they, that most jurisdictions do have them, and I fully expect, considering that there are 37 positive cases in the 17055 zip code, that we will have one in Mechanicsburg or at least one. Also, they provided the names of the long-term care facilities in the county that have cases, and I'll go through numbers for that in a second, and you'll quickly see the problem that long-term care facilities are playing for Cumberland County as far as statistically and potentially reopening, but we do not have any that have cases in the borough. They are primarily on the eastern end of the county and the western end of the county. So that is about it for that. Let me go into some of the numbers, and again, these are all available on the Department of Health website, but I know that I'm a little more well-versed in the Department of Health website than everybody else, so I'm more than willing to run through them. Cumberland County has 382 cases of COVID-19 with 25 deaths. There are cases in four long-term care facilities, which is nursing homes, personal care homes, and assisted living facilities. However, I think all of them are in nursing homes. There's one that I think is assisted living, but the majority of them are nursing homes. Those, in those facilities, there are 181 resident cases, 45 employee cases, and 23 of the 25 deaths in the county have occurred in long-term care facilities. And there are two long-term care facilities, again, one on the eastern end of the county, one on the western end of the county, that are both dealing with significant outbreaks. The 17055 zip code has 37 positive cases, and again, I may have some information by the end of the week as to how many of those may be in the borough. That is all I have right now. I can talk a little bit, at least as far as statistics. I can talk a little bit about where things seem to be heading. As you've probably heard, the north-central and northwestern parts of the state are going to be moving to the yellow phase on Friday, May 8. They will be the first counties to move into the yellow phase. There's 24 counties total, which, if you use the Department of Health regional map, it's all of the counties except one, and that one county is Columbia, which is in the north-central, the eastern part of north-central, and they will not be moving because they have some outbreaks in distribution facilities. There is a lot of talk that the southwestern part of the state will be the next one to move to the yellow phase, and that's probably going to be announced by the end of the week or early next week, and I don't know what the timeframe's going to be, whether it will be announced this week and whether it will be the 15th, so a week later, or whether it might be staggered a little more. I saw some guidance today from Johns Hopkins, from a number of people, including the former FDA commissioner who worked on this guidance, and they recommend a stagger if you're doing a regional, a regional phased reopening, which is what they recommend. They recommend two to three weeks in between opening separate regions, just because it's that amount of time that will help to show if there's an increase of cases and what steps need to be taken because of that, and how much the increase of cases is, and that type of information. So I don't have any real insight as to how soon southwestern will start to open up, but I do anticipate the announcement may come on that this week, and then that leaves south-central as the next region. Northeast and southeast still, I think, are a little bit off, but the south-central is the one that will really come into question once the southwest is set to move to yellow. We've got some issues in the south-central, I'm not going to lie. We've got some food distribution facilities that are having major issues in Lebanon County. We have long-term care facilities having major issues in Cumberland County and in Lancaster County, and York County has been struggling a bit too. They have some employers as well. They have struggled with clusters of cases. Dalton County, I haven't really looked at a lot of their numbers, but they have a lot of long-term care facilities as well, so I can't imagine that they're necessarily doing really, really well. No, they have 695 cases, so statistically, and Franklin's actually has, Franklin actually has more than Cumberland. So statistically, there's a large portion of south-central that, if you follow the 50 cases per 100,000 threshold, may not be quite ready to open. I think there certainly is pressure there from all sides to try to get this, get this state back open as soon as possible while also making sure that it is done in a safe manner. So I think it's going to be a, kind of a wait and see as to what happens in the south-central. Statistically, we're probably not as good as what we might want to see from a Department of Health perspective, but I think that there is a lot of pressure to try to get the entire state moving in that direction, so we'll see what happens there. More than willing to answer any questions anybody has.
Anyone have any questions for Nate?
Nate, I heard that the National Guard has come in to help some of these long-term care facilities. Is that what you're hearing too?
So the National Guard primarily goes in to help facilities that are dealing with staffing issues. The Department of Health has four separate groups that can go in either virtually or if needed in person to assist facilities that are having major outbreaks. We have two groups internally, and then we're, we contracted with the infection control specialist out of the southeastern part of the state, Ekri, and the patient safety authority also has the ability to go in and assist facilities as well. The National Guard is primarily going in when either there's a strike or staffing refuses to go in because they're concerned over their health and well-being. The National Guard isn't really going in necessarily as infection control specialists, but more to provide staffing if there is a need there, but yes, that is occurring.
Anyone else? Nate, I have one question. There was a recent, a recent article in the Sentinel that said Mechanicsburg has the highest concentration of cases of COVID-19 in the county, but if you read on later in the article, it, it did point out that 17050 had, had the higher number of cases, and that 17055 also included Upper Allen. So it, it really made some of our citizens a little nervous to see that, it appeared from the headline that the borough was the hotshot of the county. So if you could just quantify that for me for the benefit of those who are listening and, and that we can get the word out that, you know, it's not quite what it said in the article.
Sure, so I'm actually looking at the zip code map that the department and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency has, and that's who the Sentinel got the information from. I actually spoke to the reporter partially about this story, at least to how the zip code map is calculated. If you look at the map, their, the shipping for zip code 17257 has 108 positive cases, and those primarily are not necessarily in the general population. And then Camp Hill, for example, has 97 positives and 241 negatives. Carlisle has 38 and 229. 1705 Zebra has 44, and then Mechanicsburg has 37 posit, 17055 Mechanicsburg has 37 positives and 263 negatives. So 17055, it appears has the highest number of negative test results in the entire county. Clicking around the most populous, yes, that's accurate. So 17055 has the most negative case results for the entire county, and then is behind, and this, some of this may have changed a little bit from when the Sentinel put the story out, I think it was Friday or Saturday, but is behind several other zip codes. Now, a few of them have issues going on with long-term care facilities, but we're also behind 17050, which is now at 44 positives. So yes, the Mechanicsburg, if you look at Mechanicsburg as an address and include 17050 and 17055, there's 81 cases, but I think that that's certainly a little misleading, and it's not representative of what we're seeing in the borough. That's representative of the, anybody who would have a Mechanicsburg mailing address. So I, that, don't let that, don't let the word Mechanicsburg make you think that that's borough-specific, that is, anybody who has that address, and I think that obviously 17055 is not in as bad a shape, I guess isn't probably the best way to put it, but we're doing pretty well, all things considered.
Okay, thank you. I, I really needed to hear that, hear that from you. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Nate? Okay, hearing nothing, we're going to move on to any additions to the agenda this evening.
President Weber?
I have no, yes.
Yep. I'd like to take three items off the agenda. Item three, four, and five, the Community Day Committee met, and we are not asking for approval from council at this time for the event. We're looking to recreate the event in a different way, but we are not looking for approval, so you can remove those items, and that happened relatively recently, and I apologize, we didn't get to staff to have them removed in advance.
Okay, okay, so the three items that deal with Community Day you would like to have stricken from the agenda this evening.
Thank you.
I'll stick that motion for approval with those items removed.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the event with those items removed, and it sounded like Mr. Whitcomb seconded it. like Mr. Whitcomb seconded it. Those in favor?
I did.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Okay, Mr. Szczesny, it's your turn.
All right, give me half a second here. Running the control center. All right, the agenda items before council on May 5th, 2020, discussion impossible action on opening the pool for the 2020 season. I would like to add, the memo that I sent out to council yesterday, there was one more thing that I think that came out this morning that I read, that the Department of Health, Secretary Levine is recommending that pools do not open until we go from yellow to green. With Nate's report, I'm not exactly sure where that leaves us. Nate, if you have any kind of ideas of when that may be, that would probably be helpful to council, but that's the other information I wanted to give you on top of what, that lengthy memo that I gave you yesterday.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Mr. Whitcomb, is that you? Oh, sorry.
I didn't say anything yet.
Okay.
I'm thinking.
It appears that Kyle wants to talk but can't take himself off mute.
What's that?
It appears that Councilman Miller cannot take himself off mute.
How did he get, how did he get muted? Wow, you should be up now.
How I got muted? Can anybody hear me?
I don't know.
Yes.
I can hear you now, Kyle.
Yeah, I just think we should table this until the next meeting, because we just don't have enough information at this point to move forward with this.
If I might add to that, Kyle, the information we received from the borough manager, I don't know if you saw that memo or not, but as far as I'm concerned, the pool doesn't need to open at all. There's too much involved here. You got, you got, you got people, they're going to have to have reconstruction done inside the pool building, and an air conditioning unit put in, and that, that just doesn't seem feasible right now.
Those are things we have to do anyway, whether we open the pool or we don't open the pool. So my question would be, what expenses do we have to do, you know, to open the pool versus the expenses we do to not open the pool but to maintain the pool for the entire year? And how does that look, and how much money would we have to spend to just, you know, what would the cost benefit be to just maintain the pool versus open the pool? So that is where my question would be, and I just don't see where we're at the place in terms of where the state is to consider whether we can open the pool for safety reasons. So...
I don't, I don't think we can.
Well, I don't think we...
First of all, you're going to have...
Where if we were able to, if the state says we're able to, and if everybody, if we're able to in July, you know, we should be able to do that, but at the same time, I just, I don't think we're ready to make the decision. We don't have to make it tonight, but...
Councilman Miller, are you asking for, are you making a motion to table the item?
We didn't hear that, Kyle.
My motion would be to table.
Okay, there's a motion to table. We do not need a second for that. Those in favor of the motion to table until the next meeting where, well, I won't qualify that, for the next meeting signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we got three, plus myself is four. Noes?
No.
No.
Okay, we have two noes. I think that was Mr. Pellman and Mr. Whitcomb, yes? Okay, so the motion carries. Four to two. We will table this and make a decision the end of the month. All right, moving on.
Discussion possible action to, on approval for the Mechanicsburg Swim Club to use Mechanicsburg Community Pool on Tuesday and Friday evenings from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., and hold free swim meets on Saturday, June 6th, June 13th, June 27th, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
I make a motion to table that, too.
Okay, Mr. Pellman just made the motion to table that. Does not require a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one opposed, and five, yes.
Five.
So we will table that as well. Moving down to the resolution area.
Question impossible action on resolution 042020, recognizing the Mechanicsburg Senior High School Girls Basketball Team's advancement in the state tournament.
So moved.
And seconded by Mr. Miller, I believe. Is that correct?
Yep.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Discussion impossible action on resolution 052020, recognizing the Mechanicsburg Senior Area High School Girls Basketball Player, Talia Gillard, for being awarded Player of the Year.
Okay, it's actually Gilliard, I think.
Sorry.
T-L-L-I-A-R-D, just missed a letter there.
That's even easier than mine.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Pellman makes the motion?
I'll second.
And Mrs. Aggerton seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously. All right, next one.
Discussion impossible action on resolution 062020, recognizing the Mechanicsburg Senior High School Girls Basketball Coach, Clay McAllister, for being awarded as Coach of the Year.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Pellman makes the motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Whitcomb seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Szczesny.
Discussion possible action to accept the proposed Legacy Park Phase 1 bond reduction request. The amount of the bond will be reduced from $1,836,806.66 to $1,206,875.41.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make that. I'll make that motion.
Okay, now wait a minute, who was first there?
I think it was Scott.
Okay, Mr. Pellman was first. We need a second, Mr. Whitcomb.
I'll second.
I thought you would, okay? Has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just for the record, this reduction has been recommended by the borough engineer for the amount specified.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Szczesny.
Last item on, last item on there, you guys already passed at the April meeting. That was carryover that should have been taken off there.
Okay, I thought so, but I wanted to give you a...
Those bills were already paid.
All right, good. All right, we now come to that point of the meeting where citizens have another opportunity to speak. Is there anyone of the citizens out there that wishes to speak? If so, please hit your raise the hand button on your software and let us know who you are, or wave violently so we can unmute you. I'm not seeing all of you, but I'm seeing most of you. I'm not hearing any.
I'm seeing no hands either, sir.
Okay, all right, so we move on. Is there any other business? Okay, we will go around the table, similar to what we did last week. I'll just go in the order I see people on my screen. In case I forget someone, please let me know, because this is not the easiest thing to navigate. So we'll start with Glenda. Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay, Roger?
The only thing I would have is, I'm going to proceed with the, trying to open the compost site, and I will keep council informed as to what's going on, and the other thing is our anticipated reopening plan. I'll get that out to everyone. We will do everything we can to get this out on the YouTube channel that the borough has now, and try to keep the public informed as to what's going on.
Perfect, very good. I think, based on your comments earlier regarding the compost site, I think this week, Thursday through Saturday, monitoring that will give you some good information when you meet with them on Monday to discuss moving forward, so thank you for that. All right, let's go.
Gary.
Yes, Whitcomb?
Yes, I'd like to have a questionnaire to Roger.
Okay.
The county, is the county going to be grinding the stuff that's up there now?
They're not, no, not at this point in time. They're working on the schedule, as everybody might know. The county has furloughed most of their, a lot of their employees, 156 of them to be exact, they're working a week on, a week off. That department, particularly that department, is actually on this week, but they'll be off next week. So I don't know how long that's going to go. When they are in, I'm in contact with them to try to figure out when they can get down here, but right now, we've got a load of leaves up there, we've got stuff that needs ground for the second time, but we have plenty of product that we can give out if some people want mulch. So we're also working on getting rid of the big lumberwood that's up there to try to clear things off. So I think we're in good shape. It's going to be logistics of getting people in and out of there easily with the amount of stuff that they've got sitting around.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Roger?
No, that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anthony?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Just wanted to know what the stats were on the YouTube site.
Uh, let me tell you, I can...
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's all right. Hold on, I'm opening another tab on the computer here, I can tell you, it's not real bad. So there's like, I think we have 123 subscribers. We have the last view that Gary put out, that we put out for President Whitcomb, or, I'm sorry, President Weber, we had 16 views, I think, right now is where we're at. So we're not doing too bad. We're, you know, there's some people that are looking at it, there's other people that are not. Yeah, click-through rate, we have 155 total views for all of them. So we're, that's where we're at right now, so we've got 19 subscribers, I'm sorry.
That's good, I think that's good, a good start.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Kyle?
That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Aggerton?
Just a reminder to everyone that it's Nurses Week, so make sure you're being very thankful to all the nurses out there. So, and then the other thing is that the Downtown Partnership is continuing to meet virtually once a week on Thursdays to support small businesses, so if you know anyone that could benefit, just do a shout-out to the Downtown Partnership. I think it's been a very productive use of our time, and hoping to strengthen our businesses through this trying time.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Pellman?
Yeah, if I could put on my resident cap for just a second, can I pay my, this question for Roger. Roger, is there somebody there, if I pay my composting fee, if I just put money in an envelope in the slot with my number, it'll be re-upped, my card?
Yes, yes, we're going to also, we're going to also post that, we're going to post that out on Facebook and the website, too, that they can renew their cards one by phone with a credit card, or they can drop the post, drop it into the bin out front, and we'll notify them, they give us a phone number or an email address as to when the card's been updated.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep.
Should have done that before, Scotty.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Whitcomb, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing to add, but thank you for asking.
You're quite welcome, sir. Solicitor Coin?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Engineer Rogalski?
Wash your hands.
Thank you.
Wash your hands.
Esquire Miller, do you have anything to add? He's muted.
I'm glad you, he's unmuted, I'm glad you saved him the last, though.
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Did I miss anyone? Oh, Chief Neff.
Chief, Chief Neff and Chief Myers.
Chief Neff? He's muted.
He is not muted anymore. He's muting it as I unmuted him. There he is.
There you are, anything to add?
I don't, other than everyone in the fire department is all well, we're lucky.
Good.
Responders are feeling well.
All right, thank you, sir. Chief Myers, who is also muted. And is still muted. There she is.
I'm here, I'm here.
Anything to add?
I don't like being muted, Roger. No, thanks, sir.
Oh, I know that.
I guess that was it.
Yeah, she didn't have anything to add.
All right, well, I want to thank everybody for tuning in to the meeting tonight and keeping our heads above water, so to speak, and we'll move forward as best we can and keep everybody attuned to what's going on as best we can. And I want to thank everybody in the borough, all the borough staff, fire companies, police officers, everyone, and the public as well, for doing an outstanding job of keeping Mechanicsburg safe and healthy, and remaining to be a good place to live, and we're very proud of our citizenry for doing that. So thanks to all, and with that, meeting adjourned.